Okay, good evening and welcome everyone to our public meeting this evening. Uh, this public meeting is for Pfizer Incorporated's hazardous waste storage facility proposed license renewal. Uh, my name is Jim Ostrowski. I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll serve as moderator for tonight's meeting. Uh, before I turn it over to our team here at Eagle, I'm just gonna run through a few housekeeping details. Uh, first of all, as you've probably noted, the lines are all muted at this point. Uh, that means you can hear us, but we can't hear you. Uh, and we are recording the meeting. So we've recorded all of our public meetings. We post them to our YouTube channel. This meeting is being recorded and we will post it uh probably in the next couple of days. So if you don't see it tomorrow, it should be up there probably by the end of the day Friday. Uh, that's when we'll have it up there. Also, if you look in the chat, you will keep an eye on the chat because Christine Grossman is here with me as well from my team and she'll be putting in some items. Uh, that might be of interest to you into the chat. So tonight, if you have a question, uh, we're gonna start with Q and A. So if you do have a question after our presentation, you could type your question into the Q and A box on your Zoom toolbar. Uh, when we open it up for Q and A, you can also hit the raise hand icon. You'll see at the bottom of your screen on your toolbar. And that lets us know you have a question and you then will unmute your line so you can ask it. Uh, if you're on the phone and let's hope we do have a phone in person tonight. Uh, if you're on the phone, you can click the pound two button. And that raises your hand and we will call you by the last couple of digits in your phone number. So you can unmute your line and ask your question. All right, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy and he's gonna take it to the next uh, next stage here of the meeting. So Jeremy, you there? All right, looks good. We can see your slides.
Did not realize I was muted, sorry.
I was gonna tell you that just a bit. Okay.
Um, so thanks, Joe. Uh, tonight, we're gonna be discussing Pfizer's hazardous waste operations. At their facility in Kalamazoo, the operating license renewal process as well. And then we'll have an opportunity to have a question answer session. After our initial presentation and then also provide some time for formal verbal public comments to be added to the official record. Um, with me tonight, we have Rich Conforti, the supervisor of the Engineering and Program Support Unit. Myself, Jeremy Peppin, the environmental engineer and project manager for the facility. Nicole Sanabria, who is our geologist on the project team and Krista Headish, who is our inspector out of the Kalamazoo District Office. As a quick overview of what will be going over tonight, we'll start out with how you can get additional information on the facility. And Eagles um, authority for issuing hazardous waste operating licenses. Then discuss the facility's licensing history. Go over the facility itself and their hazardous waste operations. A quick compliance summary. The license conditions that would apply to this facility. The license renewal process and then go over uh, public comments. After that meeting, we'll have our question answer session and then the formal public hearing will begin. So to get a bit more site in or information on the site, Eagle has a webpage. Um, the link is Michigan.gov slash Pfizer. I'm drawing a blank if that's colon, sorry. Uh, Kalamazoo, for those on the phone. Um, you can find the draft license renewal application fact sheet and a bunch more information about the facility itself. At that webpage, we also have our official mailing list. That if you reach out to me um, using my email P E P I N J two at Michigan.gov, you can be added to that official mailing list. And that um, you'll be getting notifications from both Eagle and Pfizer. We also have our electronic um, mailing list that you can subscribe to at Michigan.gov slash Eagle Connect. And then we also have our waste data system. And this can be used to see more of the regulatory side of things in terms of when waste inspections were done, when fees were paid and licensing actions as well. So in terms of Michigan's regulatory authority, it is authorized under the United States Environmental Protection Agency to run the federal. Sorry, uh, to run the federal hazardous waste management program known as the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act or RECPRO for short. And Michigan is also considered a delegated state because it has received authorization from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to develop its own hazardous waste management program known as Part 111 of Financial Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Through these authorizations and programs, Michigan is able to regulate and oversee hazardous waste from its initial point of generation all the way to its final point of disposal. And those who interact and manage the wastes throughout its lifespan. So those would be the generators, transporters and the facilities that treat, store and dispose of those wastes. Um, overall, this is considered a cradle grave regulation style. Oh, whoops. Getting ahead of myself. So in terms of the facility itself, it was initially licensed under Pharmacy and Upjohn in two thousand one. And was acquired by Pfizer in two thousand three, but still operated under that initial license until December two thousand twelve, when a renewed operating license was was issued to Pfizer. That is their current license and what they are operating under. Until a final decision is made on their renewal application. Given the fact that on in June twenty twenty-two, they submitted a timely renewal application. Um, I will now hand it over to Krista to talk about the facility.
Hi, I am Krista Headich. I'm with the the staff of the Kalamazoo District Office. Um, talk a little bit of the facility. So there Pfizer's located on Portage Road, just south of Romance. And it's actually very large campus, um, extending all the way over to Sprinkle and all the way down to Center. Um, even though it is a massive, you know, pharmaceutical manufacturing facility and there's, there's a lot going on, I think it's important to understand and and the aerial view really illustrates nicely that all of this licensing discussion pertains to one building. Um, only building three eighty-eight is actually covered by the the hazardous waste operating license. And essentially it allows Pfizer to store hazardous waste for up to three hundred and sixty-five days versus the ninety days they would otherwise be um, limited to. Uh, can you switch sides, please? So building three eighty-eight um, is used exclusively for waste storage. There are no operation uh, manufacturing operations there. Um, it, the building itself is, the storage area is about sixty by forty-eight, so a little bit less than three thousand square feet. And then on the right, the portion of the building that extends down further is um, the hazardous, or sorry, the loading bay for trucks to pull in and out. The entire facility or entire building is um, has secondary containment. So there are blind sumps in both the loading bay and the the waste storage portion. So if anything is to spill, leak, et cetera, it will all be contained and not leak to the, the outside environment. Can you go to the next slide, please? The facility is designed and the license allows for fifteen thousand four hundred gallons of hazardous waste storage. And it's all container storage. There are no tanks or permanent structures, storage structures in the building. And the facility, the licensed portion of the facility only accepts waste from Pfizer-owned companies. Um, primarily from the onsite campus, but they have the ability to take waste from other Pfizer-owned warehouses or facilities as well. Uh, next slide, please. It's because of the license, Pfizer has annual inspections. So we go there every year to evaluate the compliance with the license conditions. And that includes visual inspections of all the waste in the three eighty-eight as well as records review of inspection records, training, waste profiles, manifests. Everything, everything they're required to maintain. And then if issues or violations are discovered during the inspections, those are documented through a compliance communication or violation notice. Uh, next slide, please. And then any sort of issues or violations are resolved typically just through communication and additional documentation submittal. Currently, there are no MMD outstanding violations, so the facility is considered in compliance. Um, and now we're gonna go back to Jeremy for some license requirement discussion.
Thanks, Krista. So each um, licensed facility has to comply with specific uh, requirements throughout their licenses. We'll start out with some general conditions. So each facility has to ensure that wastes managed at their facility are properly um, characterized. This process normally involves the fingerprinting of the wastes once they arrive at the facility. Um, fingerprinting is testing the wastes and just kind of an overall analysis of them to ensure that the physical and chemical uh, characteristics or properties match those that are on the waste profile that is generated at their point of initial generation. And those waste profiles will stick with that waste until or sorry, those waste profiles will stay at the facility until they either no longer accept that waste or it has to be changed due to other changes in the generation process or discrepancies in the fingerprinting. They must also comply with the requirements regarding inspection schedules. These inspections must be done at facilities to ensure that there's no malfunctions in the equipment or deterioration in things such as their containers as well as all operations at facility are being done in compliance with um, the different procedures in their licenses and management practices. We also have personal training requirements. Um, those who manage and interact with the hazardous wastes have to go through various trainings and getting different certifications to ensure that they know how to properly manage the hazardous wastes and also have to upkeep those certifications. Um, a good example would be the Hazwafer training and annual um, recertifications for those. In terms of emergency preparedness and response. Sorry, I need to. Uh, emergency preparedness in response is making sure that the facility is designed in such a way that it doesn't um, one promote releases of hazardous wastes and also ensures that it minimizes the possibilities for fires and explosions. Um, these can cover anything from fire suppression systems to different operating practices. Contingency plans work kind of hand in hand with those preparedness and response plans. Um, these are what the facility has in place to make sure that um, or to minimize the effects of a release explosion or fire to the environment and the public. Uh, normally contingency plans will include uh, sorry. Will include different agreements that have been made with local um, emergency responders and also how the site is going to notify the, let's say EPA, Eagle, public, kind of anyone who needs to know about that release or event. In terms of record keeping and reporting requirements, the site has to keep certain documents, documents such as inspection schedules. Um, different licensing or compliance actions and training records for specified periods of time and also notify Eagle or MMD of the different uh, reports that come out such as the operating reports. Um, those normally come on a monthly basis. And then we also have closure plans in most um, operating licenses and this covers how the facility will be closed in such a way to minimize the possibility for any releases and at best eliminate the um, need to on a long-term scale, protect human health and the environment. From here, we have uh, site-specific requirements. So as Krista mentioned, they store their hazardous waste in containers. So we have specific requirements for how they should both uh, store those containers such as uh, keeping adequate aisle space between them. Um, stacking heights is a big one, making sure that containers can only be stacked to a certain height so that they won't be damaged. And also um, inspecting of the containers as well. Financial assurance covers the financial assurance in the case that the facility ceases to operate and or exist for lack of a better term at the moment. And um, that financial assurance is in place so that if the state has to step in in those cases, we have the funding to close the facility, perform any corrective action that is needed and then also liability assurance. Uh, for environmental monitoring at this facility, there is a groundwater monitoring system that is used to monitor a past release at the facility and the groundwater that was affected by that. And then also corrective action requirements covers pretty much the cleanup or let's stick with cleanup for now, of any sort of releases that happen at the facility and long-term cleanup of those as well. Sorry. Um, moving on to the renewal process itself. It all begins with the submittal of a renewal application in terms of this facility that happened in June of twenty-two. And once uh, we receive that renewal application, we re- we distribute it to agencies such as the EPA, other staff within Eagle for their review. And um, comments if they see fit. And while this is going on, um, the project team is conducting our completeness review. And the completeness review was done on December thirteenth of twenty-two. Basically stating that all large portions of the application were present and that we have pretty much something that we can work on from there. Uh, notice of that completeness determination was sent out uh, in twenty-three and a public meeting was held uh, about that completeness determination similar to this one. In May of twenty-three and also um, kind of kickstarts the or kickstarted the ongoing public engagement opportunity. Just basically calling out to the public for any sort of comments or input on the renewal process. At some point throughout the renewal process, the uh, or the project team will visit the facility to make sure that any sort of portions of the application that are a bit too hard to understand just on paper or through writing. Uh, to get our eyes on those and kind of help us figure out if everything matches up. And that normally coincides with the technical review of the application. This is getting down kind of to the nitty-gritty and making sure that everything in the application means what is required in our regulations or that the regulations are covered throughout various portions of the application itself. After that technical review is done, a public comment period was started. And that will actually end on the sixth of this month. Um, and then we move on to the public meeting and hearing which we are having today. And after the public comment period ends, we will be sending out a notice of final decision and a response to comments for any comments that we receive throughout the um, application renewal process and uh, tonight as well. So in terms of collecting public comment, there are specific comments that um, Eagle has the authority or are authorized to consider when uh, negotiating with Pfizer to add additional conditions to the license. Um, to better protect the community around the facility. So the comments that we can consider are those uh, such as technical mistakes within the renewal application, non-compliance uh, of the renewal application with the rules. And then if the facility itself or their operations affect the surrounding community. Issues that we cannot consider are the popularity of a renewal or license action. And um, community activities that are going on that do not have, do not apply to the facility or the renewal process. So an example of a comment would be the facility has increased, an increased amount of sunnies coming in and leaving the facility, which is increasing traffic delays. And basically from there, we move on to requesting possible additional traffic conditions to the license. So for written public comments, you can email them to me at P E P I N J two at Michigan.gov or by uh, paper mail uh, at Jeremy Peppin at Eagle MMD PO Box three oh two four one, Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine zero nine. And written comments sent by mail must be postmarked no later than October sixth, twenty twenty-three and include your name, address, email, um, statement of the basis of the comment. So in the example, uh, the increased traffic. And then supporting relevant facts in with, on which that basis was made. So now we have time for questions, answers.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Jeremy. Good presentation. Um, right now, so right now, we're kind of in the informal, informal part of our meeting before we uh, start the hearing. So just want to open up to any questions anybody might have on the presentation that Jeremy just gave. So I don't see any hands up or anything in the Q and A box right now, but I'll give you all a minute. If you have a question, you can type it in the Q and A box on your Zoom toolbar or go ahead and raise your hand and we'll just unmute your line and let you ask your question. If you have no questions, that's, that's fine. We'll just kick off the hearing. So give it a couple more seconds. And I am not seeing any questions. So that's fine. So at this point, what we'll do is we'll transition. Thank, thank you, Jeremy. Um, we're gonna transition now to the official public hearing, which is the more formal part of our meeting. And to kick that off, I'm gonna turn it over to Rich Conforti and he's gonna read off our hearing statement. So go ahead, Rich.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Jeremy, can you switch the slides, please? I'm Rich Conforti, I'm the supervisor of the Engineering and Program Support Unit. Um, this is the official public hearing portion of it. Uh, the Pfizer Incorporated Hazardous Waste Storage Facility. Next, please. So to make a comment, click on the hand icon at the bottom of the screen, uh, type number two into your phone or to help to raise your hand and then we can make an official comment. Jeremy? So to let you know, we're recording this hearing tonight and you will be main, to be maintained as part of the public record. The recording will be shared with Pfizer subscribers and anyone on the official mailing list. The public comment period runs from August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three to five PM on October sixth, twenty twenty-three. Eagle will make a final decision on the application and draft license after the close of the public comment period. He will also issue a notice of final decision and responsive comments to anyone providing formal comment. Pfizer subscribers and anyone on the official mailing list. Following the meeting and hearing tonight and a final decision, these resources will also be available at Michigan.gov slash Pfizer hyphen Kalamazoo. Jeremy? So let you know during the hearing, we will not be responding to comments. This is where we listen to what you have to say about the facility. The comments are for the official record and will be reviewed and considered by Eagle prior to a final decision. Delected officials are expected, are invited to speak first. Others will be called upon an order and the order requests are received. Before providing comment, please state and spell your first and last name. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. So all who are interested may have an opportunity to speak. So again, how to make a comment? Click the hand icon at the bottom of your screen or type number two in your, in your phone to raise your hand. So at this point, uh, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Um, make any comments. We'll wait a little bit just to make sure somebody's not trying to unmute or something like that. Raise your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Um, anybody does have a public comment, this is the time you can make it. Uh, you can raise your hand, click the pound two, like Rich said. If you hadn't, uh, check out the chat, look in the chat. Uh, we did add several links and information into the chat on your clicking your toolbar in the chat icon, you'll be able to open that up and see it. Um, if you don't want to make a verbal comment tonight, that's perfectly fine. You can also submit the written comments as well.
Thanks for that reminder, Joe.
Okay, well, um, Rich, I'm not seeing at any of our attendees indicating they want to make a comment tonight verbally. So you can go ahead and that's, I guess, close, do the closing remarks.
Okay. All right. With that being said, uh, we're gonna officially close the public comment period at six thirty PM on October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, just to recap, public comment runs through October sixth. So there's still time to get something in either by email or uh, postal, that mail to Jeremy. Uh, you can find additional information at the Michigan.gov Pfizer Kalamazoo link. Contact Jeremy Peppin with questions at his email address or five one seven two one nine two two eight eight. Contact Jeremy Pepin with questions at his email address or five one seven two one nine two two eight eight. And submit real written formal comments to Jeremy through the PO Box three zero two four one Lansing, Michigan four eight nine zero nine. Thank you very much for attending and listening.
Alright, thanks, Rich. And just to remind everybody, we did record tonight's public meeting, so if you didn't get a chance to catch all of it or you want to share it with somebody else, you can find it on our YouTube channel. It'll probably be posted there by Friday. And uh we'll be sending out a follow-up email with again additional information as well to everyone who who registered to attend. Thank you all for joining us and have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.